At this time, I'd like to call the Crystal Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Banks is absent. Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoe.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Next is our consent agenda. No? There it is. Approval of the agenda. We got agenda before us. Looking for a motion on that? Go ahead, Nancy.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, Olga?
I second that motion.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Next is our appearance. Our appearance is...
Mike is gonna introduce.
Is that my cue? I missed it.
Yes.
Okay, we have an appearance for Mike. With Mike. Thanks for coming.
Absolutely. Glad to be here. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Since 2017, the city of Crystal has honored those who make our city a wonderful place to live and work with its Neighbors Recognizing Neighbors Recognition Awards program. Each spring, the city seeks nominations for residents who would like to see their neighbors recognized for their kindness and helpfulness. This year, the Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed the nominations and picked four winners. Some of them are here today. All four award winners recently received their inscripted Crystal awards, and a video presentation has been put together to honor them and their contributions to our community. In this presentation, we will hear from the 2022 winners Garnet Barnett, Janet and Dean Berkels, Kate and Sean Peg, and Keith Wyman. And that's a cue for our amazing IT guy, Matt.
All right.
What does it take to be a great neighbor in Crystal? Well, among other things, decorating your yard for Christmas and being the neighborhood Santa Claus. Picking the neighbor kids up from school and watching them till mom gets home from work every day. Being built-in grandparents to a neighbor's children. Or being a prolific holiday decorator and being an understanding ear during stressful times. One of Keith Wyman's neighbors says Keith is a great neighbor for going above and beyond for all his neighbors with things like yard work, but also because he turns his yard into Santa's village and wears the full-on old Saint Nick costume so families can take pictures with Santa Claus for free, just to put a smile on the neighborhood kid's faces.
I decorate my yard because I enjoy spreading the spirit of Christmas to the community. And I've been doing it since we've lived in our house for 26 years. And over the last 10 years, I've probably been sitting outside dressed up as Santa Claus. I've always loved it. I've just always loved the Christmas season and remember waking up as a little kid and seeing the tree lit in the mornings. And it just carried on as I got older.
According to one of their neighbors, Kate and Sean Peg are two of the most genuinely sincere people she's ever met, and that when she had to adjust her work schedule, Kate and Sean were able to pick her kids up every day and watch them until she got home. On top of this, they would come to her son's baseball games, take care of her pets when needed, and more. She says the Peg family are awesome people, so sweet and always ready to help.
Honestly, an honor and a privilege for us to be able to do the things that we can because our time and our work schedules allow it.
I think it's always been in our nature. You know, we've always liked to help people, whether it's, you know, little kids, older adults, anybody. You know, if somebody's stuck on the side of the road, we're gonna help them.
Garnet Barnett is a prolific holiday decorator. According to one neighbor, as soon as one holiday ends, he takes those decorations down and begins decorating for the next holiday. He plowed neighbors' driveways, provided educational enrichment for a neighbor's young child, as well as an understanding ear for that child's mother. He's always available for spontaneous conversation, and he has a particularly joyful countenance.
I open up to everybody that I meet. And one of the reasons for the yard attractions is people walking by. They'll stop and they'll start the conversation. And all of a sudden, we're talking about the weather and different topics of the day. And it's a nice way to take a break from your daily grind and enjoy your neighborhood. That's a beautiful award, and I did not expect that. It's something that I will treasure.
As one neighbor puts it, Janet and Dean Berkels are amazing people. They have sweet ways of teaching her children lessons. Jan loves to garden, and she lets the kids come over and help with their gardening. And when Dean is building or fixing things, the kids get to watch and learn. They're built-in grandparents. They never miss the kids' birthdays or Christmas, and they're happy to play cards and chat with them. And Jan and Dean help mom too, whether snowblowing her driveway or teaching her how to change a flat tire. For these and many other reasons, the Berkelses are fantastic, sweet neighbors who deserve recognition.
I think we got as much out of it as, you know, they did, as far as I'm concerned. We love being next door to them. I mean, it's so much fun with these two little kids.
In the summertime, they were over here all the time. Because it's kind of like grandpa and grandma, right? You know, and they'd watch what I was doing and watching her plant flowers and say, "What kind of flowers are these?" and all that sort of thing, you know.
And, you know, our kids are all, you know, our grandkids are all, you know, in their twenties, you know. So it's been a long time since we've had little ones like that around.
For these reasons and more, the city of Crystal recognizes all of these great neighbors with the Neighbors Recognizing Neighbors Award.
And we'll be sharing information, we'll be sharing that video on our website and on social media in the next couple of weeks. And then we do have three of the four winners here today.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes. Garnet, did you want to step forward and have a conversation?
I promise I won't keep you in line.
Yeah, it won't be your typical discussion of people passing by.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Mayor and council members. On behalf of myself and my wife Marie, and I'm sure with the other recipients, I would like to sincerely thank you for this unexpected award. We live in a great city of Crystal, and we've had a wonderful experience with it. I see the progressive nature here with your new police station farming, your excellent fire department, your medical response. I was a volunteer, so I've got all that behind me. But it's a very wonderful neighborhood, and we're so fortunate to live here and have such wonderful neighbors. It's not just us four or five. It's people helping people. That's been my model, and it works out. Everybody does that. So on behalf of myself, I definitely want you to know how much we truly appreciate this. This will be in our living room forever and forever here. And I would like to pass this on as a thank you.
Oh, thank you. Awesome.
It's an ongoing job, and I feel it's important that we make our neighborhoods, that we let our children know that it's a safe neighborhood, that it's a wonderful neighborhood. And that's what we all strive for. We try to help wherever we can, and that's what makes a neighborhood, it's people. That's the core of our group, and it's what keeps Crystal and America strong. Again, thank you very much. I hope everybody had a great Easter. And again, thank you for this nice award. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. This came out of the old Task Force dinner.
Yes, it did.
The old Task Force. So a lot of the things you verbalized was very intentional. We view the citizens of Crystal as what this city really is. You know, oftentimes, cities will have a strong commercial presence or some other type of industrial presence. We recognize that Crystal is made up of neighborhoods. And we do that by having this award process because that is the value of living in Crystal. We are primarily single-family homes, and the neighborhoods have become our focus like during that period of time when we started this. And that's just acknowledging and recognizing that it is the people, our neighbors, our immediate neighbors. And we've been gearing everything we do to help kind of promote that, just even amongst your neighborhood, as well as in our civic activities, bringing all the different neighborhoods together as well. We've been trying to work with Crystal Froeliks to kind of bring those neighborhoods together. We're doing that with civic organizations too within our community, where we have an event that happens, you know, sometimes there was a corn feed, and then there was a car show, and then there was Feed My Starving Children, all separate events. We're starting to bring them together, so we're bringing more people from the community who believe in that service, in that volunteerism, together volunteering together to make a larger event for our community. So your words are very welcome because it helps us realize that, yes, we did one thing right. Right? You know, we're trying to recognize that our community is our asset. So thank you for... This is designed to thank you, not us. I appreciate that, but it's important for, I guess, us to do our part and you to do your part, and it works really well together. Was there anyone else wishing to speak? All right.
I'm Dean Berkels, and I just want to thank you for the award. I certainly didn't expect anything like that. Thank you on behalf of my wife and I. We live down the southwest corner of Crystal. Been there almost 60 years now, and so we watched the city grow. And some of our neighbors are still there. However, it is changing over.
Sure.
And it's just a good place to live. Thanks.
Yeah. I tell you what, Dean, it's great to see that kind of that grandparent role that you guys take. You know, I hope I retire sometime and get to sit and tinker at home and have some kids there to tinker with. That's, I mean, that's been obviously the highlight of my life with my own children, so... I just, that's amazing, and that relationship... It's not in every neighborhood. You know, oftentimes, you have the older generation moving on and just waiting for the new generation, more kids to be in the neighborhood. But no, you're interacting. You're doing your part to be a part of their lives as well. So that is just, to us, amazing. So thank you. All right. Anyone else?
No, no, no. I won't do it. Bring one up here.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in. You're not required to stay for the whole council meeting. We have some business. If you want to kind of watch what business is, you're welcome to stay, but it's not rude to get up and leave, so do what you will. Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
All right.
Happy spring.
Now we have a consent agenda. We will approve the minutes from the following meetings. The work session from April 5th, council meeting from that same date, and a work session from April 7th. Approval of the list of license applications which are on file in the city clerk's office. And approval of a resolution designating how the American Rescue Plan Act funds will be designated. Also, an approval of a resolution authorizing the master partnership contract with Minnesota Department of Transportation. And final one is approval of a resolution authorizing professional services contract for work at the Golden Valley and Crystal Joint Water Commission pump houses. Looking for a motion on that? Go ahead, Therese.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
All right. Second? Olga?
I second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right.
I just have one question. So Clever Liquor, doing business as Clever Liquor at 5120 56th Avenue North? Is that the one that's on Pass Lake Road roughly... What is that?
Councilmember Budishevsky, 5120 56th Avenue.
Yeah. I'm trying to think what the cross street is there. Is that the one?
It's way east. Yeah, it's in there.
Regent, okay. 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 Very good. Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Next is open forum. Reminder to the public that you're welcome to come forward and spend about three minutes with us and tell us whatever's on your mind. We do have Bonnie Bolash is here to address the council. I'm celebrating women's business expo. Welcome. How are you?
Thank you. I'm good. So my name's Bonnie Bolash, for those that don't know me. I'm here today to talk about an event. I am the president of the Sacred Heart Council of Catholic Women, which is in Robinsdale. Our members, our parishioners, are a part of Robinsdale, Crystal, Golden Valley, New Hope, Plymouth, pretty much the northwest suburbs. As part of the Sacred Heart Council of Catholic Women, we usually do a spring event. And the typical spring event in the past has always been a fashion show. But due to COVID, the last two years, we were unable to do our fashion show. So we were discussing in terms of like long-term, like maybe there's another potential event that we can host, like a big community event. And so we came up with this idea, and that's why I'm here, because I'm hoping that you guys might know some women-owned businesses. You know, small business in and of itself during the pandemic took a huge hit.
Right.
Women-owned businesses especially are very small as a part of the small business in general. I know I had forwarded Ann. Federal contracting, they're looking at trying to help women-owned businesses. But actually, less than 5% of federal contracts go to women-owned businesses. Women-owned businesses are very much underrepresented. And so anyways, we just, we really wanted to create an opportunity where women-owned businesses could celebrate. Like, I have been in business for myself since 2007, so I'll be celebrating 15 years. You know, my background is I have an associate's degree in small business management. But I never thought that I would actually own a business. And I thought, oh, wow, like, that is really cool. So I figured there was probably more women in our community in the northwest suburbs as well. And I just, I want to get the word out. We're looking for 30 vendors. I don't, you know, obviously, being small, the small, you know, the women-owned is going to be small. But if you guys know of any women-owned businesses that would like to participate, the date is May 21st. It'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We're hoping to kind of make it somewhat fancy. There's some things that will be there that will hopefully be fancy. But the public is invited. We're hoping to make it a multi-generational and multicultural event. That is kind of like our hope for this goal for this year. We're hoping to make it long-term. Obviously, we've never done this before, but we just really want to celebrate women-owned businesses. So that's why I was here, hoping you guys would know some, so...
What's the best way to contact you, Bonnie? If people listening or watching this right now?
Yeah, they could, you know, obviously, if you Google me, you can probably find me. But Bonnie Bolash, you can call me 763-537-4955. You can email me, bonniebolash@gmail.com. The flyer should be up on the Sacred Heart website. It's just Sacred Heart in Robinsdale because there's many Sacred Heart Catholic churches. Just, it's on their website. But we're hoping to make it a great event. We hope all of you guys come. The biggest thing too is, you know, we really like to see like women of all ages, obviously. Women of all, you know, like, have you been in business one year versus 30 years? But we would like to see young women and girls come to see like, oh, women can actually own businesses. That's pretty cool. So we're hoping for a great event, and obviously, we'd like you all to come, so...
All right. Can we put that on our announcements for the next, would it be two?
May 3rd.
Correct.
For May 3rd? Because this is the 21st, right?
Yep, the 21st, yep.
How late can they register?
I think we had a deadline of like May 1st because obviously, we want to have our final numbers, you know, for the event. You know, we're looking for 30, so we're shooting for the moon, I know.
We'll advertise the event, not necessarily the vendors.
Okay, yep.
And then...
We could help promote online through our channels, right?
Okay, yeah.
And then, otherwise, yeah.
And like, and we're hoping like in the future, because obviously, you know, the city of Crystal has like opportunities for small businesses in general, that like, you know, we can maybe next year do like, we have women-specific, you know, like financing maybe, or just even having the Small Business Administration so to draw in women to also like learn about how to start your own business. Because women are very much underrepresented in small business in general. And sometimes, I think we don't have the skills. I know that I have been a Girl Scout leader, and I really, really wanted the girls to learn like Robert's Rules of Order. Like, for women and young girls to learn like what it's like to be up there and like what are the kind of the rules of how you communicate when you're sitting up there. So anyway.
Okay.
So that's why I'm here.
We'll tap staff too. Maybe they have some ideas or some resources that would be good for the organization. One of our priorities is small businesses.
Right.
I mean, that's one of our council priorities. So we'll see what we can come up with, you know, on an individual basis, as well as from...
So let the word out.
Yeah, you got it.
Thanks, Bonnie. I'm sorry, what is the title of your event?
It's called Celebrating Women-Owned Businesses Expo.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Look for that.
That's what it says here.
Yeah.
Celebrating Women's Women-Owned Business Expo.
Okay.
And it's women in this part of the metro, not just Robinsdale, Crystal, Curry?
Yeah, the northwest, because obviously, you know, women-owned business is such a small fraction of like even generally small businesses that, you know, we were thinking like, oh, I don't know if we'll find 30 women-owned businesses in Robinsdale or Crystal, you know. And so we're like, well, we'll just say the whole northwest suburb. And then hopefully, we'll find enough women-owned businesses to be able to make the event just really kind of a neat experience, I guess.
And it will be held at Sacred Heart?
Yeah, it's going to be at Sacred Heart. If you've never been to Sacred Heart, it's going to be in the gym. We, you know, we've added on, I don't know if anybody's have been over that way, but Sacred Heart, we did a huge construction, and we added on this huge space and, you know, but we're going to be having it probably in the gym, but it should be fun.
That's a great idea. I love it.
Thank you.
Are you saying there's a new gym there?
No, there's not. New gym, but they added a huge gathering space. You know, between where it was like an open space before, they created this huge gathering space. But we're going to do it in the gym.
Okay. Very cool.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's what open forum is. That's a great use of open forum. Things that go on in our community, sharing with us, and if we can do anything to help, that's awesome. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak during open forum? Seeing those staff members jump up, but that would never happen. All right. It's the regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda is our disbursements of $25,000 or greater. At this time, I will read that to the record. Those into the record. That, I think it's those. Health Partners for April Health Insurance premiums, $118,913. Cross Anderson Construction for Police Building Project Management, $64,462. The next nine are all for the police station, so I'll skip by that. Burwald Roofing Company is $145,540. Crawford Door for $47,718. George F. Cook Construction Company for $48,448. Laketown Electric Corporation for $77,147. McDowell Company for $471,569. Northern Concrete and Masonry, $72,219. River City Electric Erectors, Inc., excuse me, $26,916. RTL Construction for $73,432. Toplight Contract Glazing for $84,589. Minnesota Para for Employee City Required Contributions for Pay Date, April 1st, 2022, $67,059. Met Council for Wastewater Services for April, $142,050. Total disbursements of greater than $25,000 equals $1,440,067.78. Any questions from the council on any of these items? No questions. All right. Looking for a motion? Go ahead, John.
Making a motion to approve the listed disbursements over $25,000.
All right. Nancy?
I'll second.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. Second item on the agenda is an item relating to the gym windows at our Crystal Community Center. We have John Elm here, our recreation director. Welcome, John.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Yeah, we're here tonight to talk about some windows at the Crystal Community Center. Just a little background, the windows we're talking about are not see-through windows. They are more of a skylight-type window. And it does provide exterior lighting for the gyms. The skylight wall panels are over 30 years old and are at the end of their useful life. So the project will replace all nine of the skylight wall panels, windows. And the new skylight wall panels will improve energy efficiency as well. So 30 years newer, they've got a lot of energy efficiency built into them. There's $125,000 in the city buildings fund. The quotes are quite a bit less than that. WL Hall Company has the lowest quote at $49,365. And that's putting in the same brand that's in there now. Specro had a little different product that was more expensive. So the recommendation tonight is to approve the attached resolution entering into an agreement with WL Hall to furnish the Caldwell replacement skylight wall panels at the community center for $49,365, and to authorize the mayor and city manager to sign the agreement.
All right. Go ahead, Nancy.
Just a question. Hi, John. I'm just wondering, are the panels, do they look the same as the current, or is it a different appearance?
It's going to be basically the same. It might be slightly different, but it's basically the same look.
Nice. Okay.
Go ahead. They have a question. When they have to redo the windows, do they have to close the gym at all there, or what's the...
They will during construction, but they'll work around what the gym's schedule is.
Do you know how long the project takes?
You know, I honestly don't know. It wouldn't be more than a couple of days.
Now, so my understanding is there's nothing wrong with the windows themselves. Just because it's at the end of a useful life, it doesn't mean that it's not working. It's just the efficiency of it.
Yeah, and there's rubber seals in the windows that are starting to fail. And there's some gaps. On the outside, there's some gaps, small gaps are starting to appear.
Are those gaps letting weather in?
Not significant weather.
Okay.
I actually asked the question, do we have birds flying in? The answer was no, we don't.
Okay. All right. So it's a little more than I thought. Great. That makes it easier, quite honestly. Any other questions? Go ahead, Therese.
Have you worked with this company before?
Yeah, so the Kelwall product is a proprietary product, so they do like, if you see Lifetime Fitness, they do all those skylights that they have there. So there are not many options for, you know, for that product. So yeah, we have worked with them, I believe, in the past.
Okay.
All right. Any more questions? Motion? Anyone? Nancy?
I'll make a motion to, in support of replacing skylight wall panels in the gym at the Crystal Community Center.
John?
I second the motion.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. And you're here for the next one too. Why don't you just roll right into that?
All right. This next one has been talked about for quite a while, and there's a lot of excitement around this one. This is the repair and resurfacing of the hard-surface courts at Becker Park. As you can see by the picture, the courts are in poor condition. There has been talk about whether we keep them tennis or whether we convert some to pickleball or all to pickleball. We applied for a grant from the DNR, and we're successful in getting that for $100,000 to help with the project. A lot of public input was sought on how many courts of each kind there should be. So you can see there's two options. It was, do you try to keep a tennis court? Do you go all pickleball? And really, the public process recommended that we go with the eight pickleball courts. This banner you see on the right has been up on the fence at the courts since last fall. Scanning the QR code early on would take you to a survey where we could get input on what type of courts. And then, once we decided on pickleball, kind of exactly what that layout looks like. Links to the survey were also emailed and provided online. And then we also consulted with the community center of pickleball players. We know there's a very active pickleball community there. And we actually consulted with some pickleball players in some other communities. We went down to Wildwood Park in Golden Valley and talked to the pickleball players there, and just tried to get an idea of what the courts, kind of the layout should look like. And then the plans have been reviewed monthly by the Crystal Parks and Recreation Commission. So what we have tonight is, there's a number of things, uh, going on. Uh, first is just the court construction. So that's your pavement, and your concrete, and your fencing are the three basic things. There's some footings involved and such. Uh, so this gets the courts built. And then the next part is, once the courts are built, you need to wait a month or so, and then you bring in the company that does the color coating. And they do the stripes and the colors. And then there's also a shade canopy. You can see, um, off to the right here, there's two shade canopies. And having that kind of gathering area was important with the pickleball players, to have a place that they can wait before they rotate in. So providing some shade there was, uh, a key part to that as well. So with those three things, um, with the, the budget of two hundred thousand plus the D N R grant, there's a three hundred thousand dollar project budget. Uh, for court construction, Odessa Two came in low at one sixty-four, seven sixty. It was a little bit more than the consultant estimate, but very close to the other quote that we got, so we think that's a pretty good price. Uh, color coating and striping came in at thirty-two, oh, sixty-five, the estimate was thirty-one, eight hundred, so just a few hundred dollars off of that. And then, uh, for shade canopies, we're able to purchase those off of the state Cooperative Purchasing Venture. And, uh, so we're able to do, buy the two, uh, shade structures in the amount of twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. So the total of those three is two twenty-two, two oh nine. And there's some other miscellaneous things, like benches and bike racks and things that will also come out of that budget. So the recommendation for this is to approve the attached resolution entering into agreements with Odessa Two LLC in the amount of one sixty-four, seven sixty, to build the courts. The Two Minutes Roadways, Inc. in the amount of thirty-two, oh, sixty-five, to color coat and line the courts following construction. And then St. Quarry Recreation in the amount of twenty-five thousand, three eighty-four, to purchase the two shade canopies. And then, of course, authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign the agreements. So with that, are there any questions?
Yep. Go ahead, David.
Uh, question and then a comment. Uh, is the, uh, like, the foot, if I remember right from the Parks and Rec Commission meetings, the footprint, like, of the, uh, area is a little bit bigger than the old one? Or is it about the same?
So the tall fences will stay exactly where they are.
Okay.
Uh, at one point, we talked about expanding that, and the cost of doing that just got excessive, so we're, we're using the same footprint.
Okay, got it. And then just a comment, just a shout out to the Parks and Rec Commission for their work on this, so that was really fun to watch the process, kind of bounce back and forth ideas, you know? They have a meeting one month, and then they give some ideas, and come back with other ideas the next month, so that was really fun to watch.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Nancy?
For tennis players, too, if, have you been, gotten any feedback? I know the courts over by where I live at, Valley Place, are very nice and well-used. But are there other courts nearby? I'm trying to remember tennis courts.
Yeah, there are not tennis courts, um, they're, this kind of replaces that, and then the plan at Valley is to possibly expand that. Um, we haven't started looking into that in a lot of detail yet.
Okay, very good, so we can promote the tennis playing out by me, right?
Correct.
Valley Place, okay, thanks.
So, uh, heh, if I were a pickleball player, when do you think I'd be playing in Crystal?
If?
Well, you can play at the gym right now. But, uh, no, but outdoors, uh, I know the contractor, Odessa Two, just in case you're curious, is the company we use at Valley Place Park for all the concrete sidewalks and things there. We, we, we enjoy working with them. They're ready to go, so as soon as we get the contract going, I'm sure they'll want to get started. And, um, you know, there, there's going to be a period for after you put the blacktop down, then the color coating comes a little bit later, after the oils and stuff come out of there, so. Uh, later this summer, I hope?
Oh, I was thinking May, sorry. Okay, later in the summer.
Yes, there, there is, there is a high demand, and, and, and there's a lot of excitement about the courts.
So Wildwood, it, have you, have you dealt with the structure as far, as far as how they run? Is, are you considering something similar to the way they're doing it, uh, with kind of almost like an association?
Yeah, our, our staff is working on, uh, well, very much like at the Community Center, we have some volunteers that kind of organize things. And we're, they're working on a similar model for the outdoor courts.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I play at Wildwood, and it's, you know, it's very busy when the weather's decent. And, uh, having some overflow in Crystal is going to be fantastic.
We know that they have an outdoor storage cabinet to keep, you know, extra balls and stuff, so we're kind of looking at how that would work here as well.
Yeah. That's, yeah, it's, you wouldn't believe how personicky people are about which, which type of equipment they use, so. So I'm, I'm really excited about this, this is, you know, something we talked about, what, s- eight years ago? And it's happening, so thank you. Thank you to the Parks and Recs.
Just a comment, uh, on Sunday, they had a, uh, finals for pickleball was on TV. So you could watch, you know, I was surprised, so you could watch, I couldn't, I don't understand the scoring, but, uh...
Too many numbers, right?
Well, it was, the most announced stuff kind of blew my mind, like, you know, what the heck, they lost it, you know? I should go to the other side, well, you got a second ti- chance at, you know, serving, yeah. So there's a lot of nuances to the rules that I really didn't pick up right away, but I did, did watch it for quite a while on TV. It was entertaining, you know, a lot of close action.
There are some serious players, that's for sure. And, and, you know, the people who are very gray, don't take them for granted. They will smack it. Very good, very good. It's kind of like, it's kind of like racquetball, the older you get, the more finesse you play, and you, you just get better with age, until, of course, you can't walk. All right. Well, I, I tell you what, there's, there's, there's players at, in the gym that are in their upper eighties. They're still playing, that's just amazing. I want to play that age, that's awesome. Um, so we need a motion? Can I, I'll make this motion to approve the, uh, pickleball and basketball courts. David? All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Pickleball.
Very exciting.
All right. Next is I T System Administrator, Matt Haga is going to join us, I think, online. Um, and we're going to be talking about security cameras. Matt, welcome.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, we're going to have a very recreation-focused evening tonight. We're actually discussing their surveillance system. Um, I will try to keep it brief, both because I know that I T stuff tends to make people's eyes glass over, and because I'm at the tail end of a cold here, and I'm not sure how long my voice is going to hold out for me. Uh, short version, we are looking to replace all of the security cameras at the, the Community Center, uh, Becker Park, and the pool. Um, I realize that some of those are relatively recent cameras at Becker Park. Uh, but where, where we're at with the system is that, uh, some of the cameras are pushing fifteen years old, and we kind of decided it makes more sense to do a complete system replacement and move us to a new cloud-hosted solution, as opposed to what we have been doing, where, right now, we have, um, Recreation has their own DVR server, or their own camera server. Public Works has their own camera server, City Hall has their own camera server. And we're looking to kind of centralize the cloud-hosted solution for our camera systems. The, the one exception would be the Police Department. They would retain their own DVR moving forward, just because they have different evidentiary requirements for their camera system. So this picture here kind of gets you a good idea of what some of the older cameras reportedly had in place look like. Uh, they, they wouldn't do a whole lot for us if we had to use them for any evidentiary purposes. They're not really giving us a whole lot of anything. Uh, we've got, I would say, of the roughly forty cameras we have throughout Recreation, about ten of them are this vintage still. They're the old, you know, fifteen-year-old analog cameras that, that aren't giving us a whole lot of image quality. Um, so we did reach out to a couple of different vendors to get quotes. Uh, we went with, the, the vendor we're looking to move forward with is Cloud Computing Solutions, who is, who West Metro Fire recently used for, for their camera indoor security project. Uh, we also talked to the vendor that Robbinsdale and Golden Valley used for their project for the same, the same camera system. Um, and Cloud Computing Solutions came in the lowest at just under fifty-eight thousand for the camera work, with a contingency line item of just under three thousand dollars. Um, depending upon what kind of cabling they find at some of the older cameras, whether you have to pull a new cable link. So we're looking at a total maximum anticipated cost of about sixty-one thousand dollars. Uh, we do have eighty-five thousand dollars available and approved in the cap, in the I T capital fund, um, for this project. Oop, I clicked on the wrong screen, problem with ten, two screens go up here. Um, so the council is being asked to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing replacement of the Recreation Department's security cameras with the Repahta system. It's called, like, Cloud Computing Solutions. And, uh, that I will turn over for any questions.
All right, thank you, Matt. Uh, first thing, Matt, I want to thank you for your work over the past couple of years. Um, I, I know you hear it from time to time, but, uh, you don't, you don't address the council very often, and it's just, it's nice to, to take the opportunity to thank you for everything you've done to make this accessible for citizens and for us when we weren't coming on site, so all your work in the last couple of years, thank you for that.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Um, also, uh, in relationship to the camera project, a couple of things. Um, the servers, so we'll no longer be maintaining servers.
We, yeah, we, we will get away from hosting our own servers, uh, with the exception of the Police Department. And that's just, just, you know, they have cameras in the jail, capture audio and video in the jail and things like that, those we'll want to keep on site. But throughout, um, City Hall, Public Works, and the Community Center, Recreation, all of those cameras will move to a cloud-hosted server and a cloud-hosted service.
So, so on, on the analysis, so obviously, the cloud's service is going to be an operational type expense rather than a capital.
Correct.
Do we know, are those numbers near the same cost, or is there a benefit? Do we get a benefit for not spending on new servers every five years, or whatever the useful life is?
Sure. So we budget, uh, we, so we do new servers every five years in each of those locations, and we generally budget about ten thousand dollars per server. Um, the other thing we're doing now is we, we budget roughly fifty thousand dollars per year for a security system and camera upgrades and maintenance. And we can kind of, we can start transitioning some of that money over to licensing for this camera system. I think, in the long run, I think we're actually going to save money with this system, as opposed to what we have been doing. Uh, because we go to having warranted and licensed cameras, as opposed to having a bunch of break-fix and server replacement deals, like we have going now. So that's, that's kind of where that one, it, it kind of, I mean, it'll shake out roughly, even at least initially, when we're doing the replacement and the swap, but I think in the long term, we get cheaper.
Yeah, a- and, and that's just the cost side of it. I mean, the picture you showed was at, like, twelve fifty-nine, it looks like twelve fifty-nine in the morning.
Yeah.
Um, I'm assuming that was a day picture?
Yep.
So, so we're...
Yeah, that's, that, I think that was, I'm trying to remember which camera that is, I think it was the baseball concessions, at, at the middle of the day on a relatively sunny day.
Yeah, but that, 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 that was not something we should stand for. So, so we're going to get a product, uh, and plus, we'll be able to increase our, from what I understand, we're going to be able to increase our, uh, our data?
Correct, yeah, and it'll actually make it easier for us to expand in the future, too. Um, kind of what brought Mr. Elholm and I together on this whole project initially was, we were talking about getting cameras at the dog park. And with this, with the system we're looking at moving to, it makes it easier for us to do the, the more remote areas of the city and things like that, because we can hang a cellular modem up and a light pole with the camera, and not have to run city fiber to a park to get a camera to it. All we need is a cellular modem and a light pole to hang a camera.
Sweet.
So it actually makes us, makes it easier to add new cameras and decreases costs associated with that in the future, too.
Wow, that's nice. Okay, any other questions for Matt? All right. Looking for a motion on this. Nancy?
I'll make a motion approving the purchase of Recreation Department's security cameras documented in the capital replacement plan.
All right, second? Go ahead, David.
Second, Ed.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Do we have a couple announcements? Next city council meeting is Tuesday, May third, at seven PM here at Crystal City Hall. Parks and Rec Commissions will host an annual Arbor Day celebration and park cleanup on Wednesday, May fourth. That's from six to seven thirty PM, and that's at Bass Lake Park, which is just south of the airport, is that right? Yes. Okay, and then Metro Transit and Hennepin County are having a community meeting about the Blue Line extension on, on Thursday, May fifth, from five to seven, and that's at the Crystal Community Center. So that is in our community. Uh, city council meeting and work sessions are available for your listening or viewing on our website, crystalmn.gov. Uh, feel free to peruse that. Um, and reminder that these are open to the public, and you're welcome to attend. Nancy?
John, you've mentioned no mow May.
Yes.
Can you remind people, and if those signs are available, if...
We're working on it.
Okay.
Yeah, but no mow May is a real thing, so, yeah.
You don't need a sign to do it.
Yeah.
And why do you do no mow May?
It's beneficial to the biodiversity of our environment, so allows the critters themselves to be able to gather the nectar that they need to be able to, um, you know, pollinate all the plants, and, uh, I, I don't know if I can go much farther than that, it's just a good thing, how about that?
Are bees critters? Are bees critters?
Bees are critters.
All right.
Bees are critters, yeah.
Go ahead, David. I would just add to no mow May, with the weather we're having, you're not, lawn's not growing anyway, so you don't need a mow anyway, so, yeah.
It's not May yet.
Oh, yeah. And then, uh, one other thing to add with the Parks and Rec Commission, I'm going to bring my puppy, so that's a way to get people motivated to go to that, uh, to that...
The cleanup?
Event, yeah.
Nice, oh, very nice.
All right, any other announcements?
Making a motion to adjourn?
That is not an announcement, that is not an announcement. All right, who's got a second?
He's announcing that he's making the motion. I'll second.
All right, thanks, Nancy. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Brendan's not here, we're passed. All right, have a great, great month.